A lot of tubing.
We have a lot of tubing.
Wow. I see you like four brand new ones.
Yeah, yeah, we, we.
Guys, I'm going, I'm going live real quick. Give me a second.
We want to be prepared for public.
So those blue machines aren't to pump the sewers just to pump the road?
It's, it's, it's to pump water, but they can pump sewers too. They can pump anything.
You're live.
But we'll pump it.
Gary, you're live.
Ready?
Yep.
Uh, call to order. Stanford of Presidential Allegiance. Uh, where's the flag?
Oh.
Presidential Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Board member Cunningham. Board member Walker. Vice Chair Schrader.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Approval of minutes. Everybody want to make a recommendation for your approval? Want to make an?
For the approval of the minutes?
Yeah, make a recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation to approve the minutes.
January.
From January sixteenth, twenty-five.
Roll call.
No, I have a, I don't have a second.
I seconded.
Oh, okay.
And Mr. Chair, if I may for the record, uh, so this is one of the only items. It's not a recommendation for the, for this board. So this will just be a motion to approve the meet, the meeting minutes from the January sixteenth meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Board Member Cunningham?
Yes.
Board Member Walker?
Yes.
Vice, Vice Chair Schrader?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any additions, deletions, withdrawals, or continuities? Uh, six, uh, six da, six dash one? Consideration and recommendation, approval of ordinance, such and such.
Town manager, did you want to do any projections on, on this particular?
You know what? Let me say a couple of words after the, the golden, golden tones that you emit are sent forward into the atmosphere.
For the record, if I may read the item into the record. So this is consideration and recommendation of approval of ordinance amending Article three, Division six, M one industrial district of the town code. And Mr. Chair, this will be a public hearing. I know that there's no one in the audience, but just for the record. Thank you.
There we go. Uh, it is now. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning and zoning board. My name is Mike Von der Mullen with Keith. We're the consultant town plan for the town. Uh, this is an application. Uh, it's, it's a town initiated. It's a text amendment, uh, to, to the M one zoning district. Um, and you'll see there's some particulars to it, but essentially there, there are, are some potential for redevelopment along, uh, Howlandale Beach Boulevard. Where there are some, uh, the potential for this redevelopment has some complicated, uh, real estate transactions that are going with it. So, uh, the, the town was amenable to, to helping out, uh, this re, this developer who's redeveloping on Howlandale Beach. And essentially, uh, we're, we're setting this up so that, uh, you can allow a small amount of retail. It's associated with a big, big box retailer of a particular kind. Um, and there are, there are representatives here now, so we can also open this to a public hearing. And, uh, however, if, if for some reason, and because it is a complicated project, if for some reason the project does not move forward, the existing buildings that are now there, we did not want to make non-conforming. So therefore, this is the text amendment that allows the existing buildings to remain. And if the project moves forward, they'll be purchased, they'll be demolished, the new retailer will come into the project. However, there's, there are still a lot of steps to do, to move forward on this. There's a plat. There is a site plan approval. There's probably some, uh, parking to look at, maybe some waivers here or there. So there's, there's still quite a long process for this project to move forward. Um, I think their intention is to make sure it does move forward. Uh, however, uh, this particular ordinance will allow the existing property owners, if, if the project does not move forward, to essentially not become non-conforming. Uh, the, the buildings that are there are essentially, uh, self-storage buildings. And we did not want to make them non-conforming while we went through this process. Uh, therefore, we, we had written up the staff report as we did, uh, this, this, uh, amendment to M one. It is, you know, it's extremely minor. There are a couple of different additional steps as the site plan goes through. There is a thing that county requires us, which is called commercial flex, because we have industrial for the i, industrial property. And commercial for the commercial. You're not really allowed to mix the two. Uh, so there is a process where you can, and that process will be handled at site plan approval instead of at the zoning process. Uh, the, the, the amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, and your staff recommends approval of this. And I'll conclude my presentation there.
I just have one question. The buildings that's there, the people who owns that, their props, is people there that's in these buildings, correct?
Uh, there, there is an owner and the, um, that owner owns the building that is a self-storage facility.
Oh, okay. So it's nothing like a business or anything that's going on?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
So that'll only encompass that area? Yes. Yeah, it, it, we wrote it, uh, particularly so that it, it, it only affects Howlandale Beach Boulevard. So there may be another instance somewhere along Howlandale Beach Boulevard. Uh, but it's, it's, it's very unique situation. And is your location for this? The location is where the, the old bank is, the old Wells Fargo. Yeah, yeah. Right across the street from me. Yes. Right across the street from you. Oh, wow.
Where is that?
Uh, Park, Park Road in Howland. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a few, maybe two blocks, uh, uh, west of the freeway of ninety-five.
Yeah, it's before ninety-five.
Yeah. Yeah, before racetrack. Yeah, before racetrack. And then on the other side is Goodwill.
Right. So the, that, those buildings are unoccupied?
The, the, the bank is unoccupied. The self-storage building behind, uh, the, the, this is what's particular too. It's a self-storage building that's behind the bank. So that's, that's the, that's the piece. Yeah, I'm not aware of any self-storage behind the bank. It's, it's, um.
Yeah, when you turn into the lane right there, there's a big.
Well, there's one, there's, there's one behind Racetrack, that I know. Not the big one. It's, it's one of the small, one story ones. Yeah, I guess. I know there's a little trailer park in there somewhere. Yeah, that's farther, farther north. Yeah. Yes. Yeah, I'm surprised there's been nobody in that bank area for what, over a year now, I think.
Is it a year already? Since I moved, I remember the Wells Fargo.
Yeah, it's been, it's been over a year, I think. Yeah, I think, yeah.
Mr. Chair, can you open up the floor for public comments?
Uh, I'm opening up the floor for public comments.
Hello. My name is Tracy Lautenschler. I'm an attorney with the law firm Greenberg Traurig. And I represent the potential developer, developer of the site, the Home Depot. Uh, so we appreciate the support that the staff has provided, and I think this was a really that has been devised to allow the self-storage facility to not, to not be concerned about becoming non-conforming if we made an application to rezone it to be one. So, and I think that the, the ordinance also, it, it doesn't, it might create other opportunities, but most of your Howlandale Beach Boulevard is already with some business zoning. So it's not creating any incompatibilities either. So we appreciate the support and the willingness of staff to work with us on it. And the applications will be coming in shortly.
And what, did you say that there was something going to be there?
What, I represent Home Depot and we're going to be submitting applications very soon.
Yeah. So you, it's going to be a Home Depot, possibly. Ooh.
A Home Depot or an affiliate of Home Depot? Home Depot, Home Depot?
Home Depot. The real Home Depot. Yeah, that's the proposal.
They're going to move that one from there or just?
No, gonna make a note.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, I was wondering, there's a Home Depot right up the corner there.
Oh, in West Park? Around in the corner.
It's West Park.
Yes, it's West Park. Because that's where the West Park offices and stuff like that.
Yeah, this will, it won't, this will not cause the closure of that store. They'll, they'll both be supported by lots of good business.
Okay, so instead of running up to four forty-one, you just go on Howlandale.
Okay, that's good. So I just wanted to have the opportunity to say hello, introduce myself. You'll be seeing me again as the applications come through. Okay.
Thanks, thanks Tracy. I, I didn't know if, if, if the tenant was still confidential, so I, I appreciate you.
Oh, okay.
Explaining that. That's why I said big, big box retail.
My client owns, has closed down most of the property and so it's in the public record now.
Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of remarks I'd like to make if I could.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, um, the town manager generally speaking doesn't attend these meetings, but what an opportunity I have just to say to all three of you, thank you. The zoning board is frequently the one that sort of gets lost in the shuffle. This is not the one where all the public comes and the cameras come and the, uh, but it's a pretty thankless duty. But the commission itself, when it considers new development projects, they can't get to first base on a new development project unless you do your work and you come to these meetings. And I realize it's, as I mentioned, relatively thankless job, but that's why I wanted to say thank you. Um, it, what you do is so essential to the smooth and orderly development of our community. Uh, um, originally, I came from the Cleveland area. And there's a community up there called Euclid, Ohio. Now, have you ever heard of Euclidian zoning? Well, I was the mayor of Euclid, where Euclidian zoning was established. And the Supreme Court of the United States and Euclid versus Ambler Realty, which Mike is very familiar with and Tracy as well, uh, used our community as sort of, of the, uh, way of demonstrating to the rest of America that we needed to have orderly, controlled zoning activity. But something they didn't mention in that, that Supreme Court opinion is that you can't do it without dedicated members of the zoning board. So thank you so much. I came here today not just to say thank you, but with the ulterior motive of explaining to you that we have been working on this project with these folks from Home Depot for more than a year. And, um, the financial impact upon our general fund of the completion and going forward of this project is in the millions of dollars, just to our community, in the millions of dollars. Uh, and that's why we've taken our time to so very carefully analyze, um, the nature of Howlandale Boulevard, the zoning in there. Uh, generally speaking, that's why when Tracy referred to the fact that what is happening here is consistent with the rest of the zoning. In fact, we wanted to make sure that our friends who are at West Park weren't going to see a negative impact on the Home Depot that's already there over near Pembroke Road and four forty-one. Um, so the, the fact of the matter is that it's a win-win for everybody. But we wanted to make sure that the real estate end of this was completed in such a way that did not endanger, that is, have the potential to put someone into a future non-conforming use. And so the lawyers got together and came up with this really fairly unique method of doing it. And the nice thing of it is that it's a very minor text change is all that's happening as relates to the M one industrial district. So I came here tonight to urge your passage of this, uh, because the future opportunity for us to provide growth of our police department, expansion of our fire services, infrastructure, and all the other things that we do for our community. Um, it's important. Our residents count on the business activity to pay for all our services. Believe it or not, ninety-five percent of the revenue of our town comes from our business activity. Only five percent comes from our residents. We like that because that means our resident base can rely on our business space to provide the services that they're entitled to. This Saturday, we're going to have a food drive. And we have now, I've reestablished having a food drive once a month over there at Preserve Park. And so we have to get volunteers, we have to go through forms, we have to spend money on some publicity and public relations so the people who need the food can get there. And also to provide for other elements, traffic control, things like that. How does a little town like this afford to do that? Because we have this strong business base. And so, uh, so we continue to be a town. You know, it says the small town that means big business back there. But you know what? It should read the small town that means big business and that allows the big business to pay for a high level of service for our residents. That's what it should read. I don't know if they want that much verbiage on our logo. Uh, but, um, I'm, I'm going to ask if you can to consider the idea of approving the measure that's before you this evening. And thank you so much for hearing my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
So we can now open up for discussion? Okay, uh, I like to start off by saying I live right there. The traffic is horrible now. Especially going east. And it's not bad now because Canadians are gone and there's no school. Boy, I, I see a big problem with traffic issues from this.
May I address that for a moment, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon me?
Can I talk about that for a minute?
Sure.
Okay. Um, one thing you should met, uh, realize here that you're not being asked to approve the propriety of the zoning in this particular project. In other words, if for some reason you're concerned about, uh, a Home Depot bringing additional traffic, um, that shouldn't necessarily be a reason to vote against this. I'll explain to you why. We haven't had, had as of yet the opportunity to approve and participate in the design of the development plan. The development plan is the area in which we address that issue and make sure that other things are done in terms of the traffic patterns, in terms of road construction. In fact, one of the great benefits of, of moving forward this now is that in the development plan, we can talk to Tracy's people about the way to do some other things with the way the water is accumulating over there. As you know, water over the John P. Lyons area is, is an issue. So it, it's going to give us an opportunity to address a lot of other issues. But as you know, Jeff Lewis, uh, our building director is a fiend on smooth traffic plans and other things that have to be done. So we'll have an opportunity to have that discussion, but I'm assuring you as a town manager.
Would be something that would really need to be addressed. It's.
I, I, I'm telling you, you're not the first person. I, I'm, I've raised that issue. When I come to town in the morning, I come up, uh, along Howlandale there, and everybody knows that that area can get very congested. On top of that, the railroad thing comes down when you're in a hurry to get there on top of all that.
And them four, four street, them four lights are from South Park Road to the freeways.
Yeah.
That, that, that area gets really, really.
So I, I promise this organization right here, all three of you, we will proceed with a development plan that takes that into account because we're all aware of that. And by the way, the history of Home Depot is they take that into account as well. In other words, one of the things they want to do is they don't want to, the community to say, boy, what a pain in the butt it is to have all that traffic there. So their traffic engineers, uh, are very careful. I've seen Home Depot developments they've had where the cut-ins for the driveways are in unusual places. And the reason they're in unusual places is because someone from the town, such as Gary, wanted to make sure that we had access to the area be one in which the traffic situation is under control. So.
Now, the one in West Park, they got four or five ways to get out of there.
Yep.
I mean, I, I go there all the time. I, I, there's many ways I can come in and game out, and it's never an issue over there.
Yeah, well, you could.
See how big that, that, that Home Depot.
Oh, yeah. You could, I, I'm guessing you can, I'm very familiar with it because I looked at that before we looked at this one here. And they must have ten or eleven different ways because you've got some businesses in the front and they've allowed you to go like where that Miami grill is. You can go in there, you can go off Pembroke Road, can go off the side. I mean, there's every which way to Sunday. Uh, and that's part of the concept of how we protect the traffic flow along Howlandale Beach Boulevard. We don't want a headache. We want a victory. And, uh, we're confident we can deliver it, of course, with your help on this, uh, M one change tonight.
So we're just voting tonight to get it started?
Yes.
There's going to be many more issues to deal with as you go along?
Several.
Several.
Yeah. Miss.
I definitely think that's a number one issue there, number one.
We want to make it clear that, that's our main focus. Go ahead with it, but that's, we really want that to be our main focus. How to get in and how to get out.
Mr. Chairman and, and members of the, of the board, it, as the town manager said, what you are considering tonight and what's before you is just a text amendment to the city's code. And you'd be making a recommendation to the town commission on this specific change to the city's code. Uh, any other considerations that involve, you know, site plan, et cetera, for any development that would come, uh, that would be submitted as part of, you know, this property in speci, in particular? Those are considerations that, that are beyond the scope of just what's before you today.
So now we're, we, I might make a motion for two.
Mr. Chair, if there's no further deliberation or discussion amongst the board members, then a board member is free to make a recommendation.
Do you have anything to say? We have anything to talk about? No, my only concern was the answer that it was, to make sure it wasn't running nobody out that was there. Yeah, that's fine. It's empty. Everything looked good? Yeah. Everything, it was laid out, it was well laid out. To be, you guys really laid out good. So we understood it perfectly. Yeah, good.
Hey, so I may have to make a motion.
What's the name of the?
We're, we're, we're just going to say, uh, M one text amendment?
You could, um, you know, if I, if I may assist with the motion? This would be a motion, uh, to either, to recommend either approval or denial of the, of, uh, item six one on the agenda. And you could say it just like that.
It's a motion to approve six point one.
Six point one of the agenda.
You need a second to that, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Ms. Walker?
No, I was just.
Oh, okay.
She made a motion to approve six point one.
I make a motion to recommend approval, approval of six point one to be considered. I seconded.
Roll call.
All right. Board member Walker?
Yes.
Board member Cunningham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schrader?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, the seven point one, is this, uh, in addition?
Yes, so, uh,
One of the time that we're not going to have a meeting.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning and zoning board, uh, this, this is, uh, just a, an informational item. Essentially inform the board that, um, your staff has been working with other folks in the town uh, to process quite a few amendments to the zoning code. They've been in process for several months. Some have been in process for almost a year. And they are now all starting to come forward. And so I just wanted to make sure nobody was like going to take a world cruise for six months or so. Uh, because I'd say over the next few months, and at least for the next two months, that you, you will see these particular items coming, uh, before you for consideration. So there's, uh, another one to, to do some regulations for self-storage facilities. There was a moratorium that was placed by the town commission, uh, a few months back. Uh, so we've got those regulations almost ready. There's a zoning code, a sign code rewrite. Um, there's a, a parking code rewrite. Uh, there is also a code amendment that addresses the Live Local Act, which is a state law that preempts city zoning, but they, it's, the state requires us to provide guidelines within the zoning code uh, to assist with developers on those Live Local Act projects. Uh, there's also been consideration of the town's color palette. And then, uh, just recently, uh, some, some alcohol license regulations, some tweaks uh, to that to provide better definitions. So, uh, this was just informational. We don't have any, um, you know, sample ordinances to bring you at this time. We just were, wanted to give you just a heads up.
Don't leave town.
And so there's, there's no action that needs to be taken. It was, it was just purely informational.
So that's it. Adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn, I want to say thank you again and invite all three of you Friday of this week. At noon time, we are going to have something called an employee appreciation luncheon. And since I'm expressing my appreciation to you, uh, it won't be anything fancy. Uh, I think it's going to be in this. We'll get the information to you, but if you could free up your calendar for Friday, I believe that is the twenty-sixth? Or is it the twenty-fifth? Twenty-sixth at noon. Uh, please join us for lunch. There'll be a few games. I promise no one will be embarrassed. But, uh, it would be outstanding. I'd love to rest of our employees. I'd love the rest of our employees to see the people that are, are working in the trenches on the zoning issue. So if you have a chance to...
Excuse me, town manager, it's the twenty-fifth on Friday.
Twenty-fifth, okay. At noon time. So, um, if you can, Madam Clerk, when we finalize the location, can you make sure that they receive the appropriate information? But we'd, we'd love to, uh, love to see you participate.
Okay. If I can, I will.
Lunch is being provided by Chick-fil-A.
Oh, okay.
So if you, if that hasn't appealed, it does for me. You're certainly welcome.
Yeah, that, that, the Christmas one was very good, but the one before it was very super. The one by the strip club.
I have no comment, Mr. Chairman.
It was, it was in your strip club building.
I, but...
Don't say that. It was a smaller occasion, but the one at, um, what's the name of it?
Last year.
The one on the beach.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That was last year.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to...
He's talking about the one beforehand.
I know the one he's talking about.
Yeah, it's still under investigation.
It's, no. You just love the cupcake.
It was good, too.
The food was, the food was good.
Oh, the cupcakes, right. Still remember them.
But this was a larger, bigger occasion where, you know, people, it was different.
Yeah, they could mingle.
A little bigger, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, it was a big, good ming, mingle. But they were both excellent.
Mm-hmm. Very good, yes. The cupcakes.
Yeah, you love the cupcakes. The food was excellent, as a matter of fact. It was excellent. This one does have more variety, but the food at the, uh, whatever you want to call it, it was very good. Then we need you there next year. We need you there next year.
Mr. Chairman, I can't leave till you make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn? Second.
I seconded.
Thank you very much.